And we're live.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the second series, second in a series, for the fiscal year 22 budget hosted by the Boston Public School Committee and our superintendent Brenda Casellius. We will begin now with our pledge of allegiance. So I will ask all my colleagues if you could please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Because this is a remote session, I'm going to ask Ms. Sullivan if she could please call the role.
Dr. Coleman.
President.
Mr. DeRouge.
President.
Dr. Rivera. Ms. Robinson.
Present.
Mr. Tran.
Present.
Mr. O'Neil.
Present.
Ms. Oliver Davila.
Present.
All members are present with the exception of Dr. Rivera.
Thank you very much. Tonight's hearing is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and also on YouTube. For those of you joining us on Zoom or at a later date, you can find tonight's documents posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the March 9th link. The agenda and many of the budget documents have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any documents that are not translated prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Rediano, Mandarin, Cantonese, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After I finish asking the interpreters to introduce themselves, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. Please click the icon to select your language preference. We'll begin with our Spanish interpreters. If you could, please introduce yourselves and invite our Spanish-speaking audience to switch their Zoom channel into Spanish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am one of the Spanish interpreters that we will be providing simultaneous interpretation tonight for the Spanish-speaking persons in today's meeting. I will be alternating with my colleague, Mr. Rondo Dominguez. We will be taking turns every 30 minutes for interpretation purposes. I will now proceed to explain the Hispanic population, how to access the icon for interpretation purposes. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy uno de los interpretes simultáneos contratados para esta reunión. Voy a estar alternando con mi colega, el señor Rando Dominguez, para hacer interpretación cada 30 minutos y tomar turnos. La forma como van a accesar la interpretación tiene que buscar el globo que aparece en la parte baja de la pantalla. Van a apretar el globo redondo que aparece ahí, van a seleccionar el idioma español para que puedan escuchar nuestra interpretación simultánea. Aquellas personas que dispongan de un celular para accesar la reunión tienen que buscar los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior de la pantalla del teléfono y seleccionar interpretación. Si no ven el globo redondo, tienen que bajar en su computador o en el teléfono inteligente la versión más actualizada de Zoom. Yendo a la página web www.zoom.us, radio inclinada down low. Otro vicio importante, aquellas personas que vayan a hablar en público esta noche, es importante que pasen del canal en español al canal de inglés para que el panel del comité escolar los pueda escuchar y el intérprete les pueda interpretar. Van a cambiar de español a inglés cuando llegue el turno de hablar. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Juan. My name is Rando Dominguez. I am one of the simultaneous interpretations. Muy buenas noches, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Rando Dominguez. Soy uno de los interpretes. Voy a estar trabajando, como dijo mi compañero Juan Bernal, mi colega Juan Bernal. Vamos a estar interpretando en intervalos de 30 minutos cada uno. Una cosa también importante que Juan tal vez olvidó, cuando vayan a hacer el comentario público, deben de comentar de manera pausada y dar primero habla y después tener la oportunidad al intérprete de que traduzca o interprete lo que ustedes están diciendo con una pausa. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. I would like to ask our Haitian Creole interpreters, Sergio Santillar and Nadeji Suli, if you could please introduce yourself and provide Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sergio Santillar, Haitian Creole interpreter. Moi dis bonjour à tout le monde, capitaine. Nous, c'est moi-même qui a interprété pour après-midi. Et puis moi, j'avais Nadej qui a interprété tout. M'a commencé à interprétation et puis m'a fini dans une zone vers 7 heures. N'a déjà pris à 7 heures et au-dessous. Et puis moi, content que tout le monde a attendu à ce programme. Et moi, c'est toute question, nous gagnons pas hésiter pour nous adresser lui. Et puis n'a clic en bas, on appuie en globe, on appuie pour entrer la conversation. Et second, par exemple, on dit ou pas hésiter pour dire. Et puis moi-même, Nadej, n'a l'ami très clair pour. Et moi, tout le monde, bon travail, bonne écoute. Merci.
Hello, non, moi, c'est Nadej, je suis l'intérprete pour Creole Haitien. Donc comme Sergio se dit, non, moi, nous avons interprété pour nous à partir de 7 heures 2 jusqu'à 9 heures, jusqu'à la réunion finir. Donc, m'a interprété pour nous, pas hésiter, poser questions. Donc, n'a pu clarifier quelle que soit l'information qu'il y a. Donc merci et bonne écoute. Merci pour participation.
Thank you. I would like to ask our Cabo Rediano interpreters, Josiane Lopes and Gersham de Silva, if you could please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions in Cabo Rediano.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gerson. Me and Josiane will be the K-Ferdian interpreter for today. Bonne tarde, bon étude. Mon nom est Gerson. Et junto avec Josiane, nous devons être intacts Cabo Rediano. Puis, notre Seigneur Creole, bien, Creole Cabo Rediano, nous pouvons aller debout sur nos télés, au écran. Et nous calquons à quel symbole de globo qui t'afla interpretation or interpretation. Et puis, on a la liste de langues spacieuses. Nous calquons à Cabo Rediano. Obrigado.
Hello, good evening. My name is Josiane Lopes. I will be one of the K-Ferdian interpreters assigned for this meeting. Bonne nuit, bonne tarde. Mon nom est Josiane Lopes. Je suis l'un des interprètes de cette réunion. J'ai un ami de Gerson. Si ma flèche, on s'attaque à calquer à quel globo. Si nous tenons accès à quel globo, nous certifions que nous tenons une version majeure, simple de Zoom, tant au computer ou au téléphone. Obrigado.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our Mandarin interpreters, Tina Wang and Wei Li, if you could please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin.
Go ahead, please, Lee.
Thank you very much. I'd like to now introduce our Cantonese interpreters, Anna C and Terry Yang. If you could, please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions in Cantonese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. 大家好，我是Anna。我係Terry。今晚为你为你提供广东话同步翻译的。如果你想听到广东话同步翻译的，你可以用公屏的那个地球仪，你按那个地球仪，选Cantonese，你就会听到广东话同步翻译的了。如果你看不到这个地球仪，或者没有这个功能的呢，那么的话呢，你要去Zoom呢，去更新你这个的版本啊。Thank you. Terry, go ahead.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you. I would like for our Vietnamese interpreters, Vi, Hoang, Lee and Du and Tru, if you could please introduce yourselves and provide Zoom instructions in Vietnamese.
Good afternoon. My name is Yu. I'm Vietnamese interpreter for today.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair and everyone.
Thank you. And I'd like for our ASL interpreters, Michael Hirschberg, Yolanda Galloway and Simon Martinez Jr., if you could just introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. This is Yolanda speaking right now. I'll be one of the interpreters this evening and joined by my colleague currently who will be introducing himself.
I'm Michael, one of the other ASL interpreters.
And we have a third hopefully joining us this evening. And I'll just take one moment to explain in sign language how folks can access us. Bear with me one moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. And thank you to all of you for making our meetings more inclusive. We really appreciate it. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. And I just want to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist all of our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you so much for your cooperation. I wanted to start our meeting by taking a few minutes to discuss the news coverage over the weekend and the frustrations expressed by some of our students. As many of you know, my life's work has been centered on student voice. I became a school committee member because this work is personal to me and because I believe in our students and in their wisdom with all my heart, most especially our Boston students. So as students shared their stories over the past few days, I was heartbroken to hear the pain in their voices as they talked about their experiences. And I want to unequivocally say that this school committee and the superintendent are committed to working with our students to address all of the concerns that were raised and to find a path forward together. Superintendent, myself and her team have spent the last several days talking with students, and we will continue to talk with students and to hear their concerns. The information recently shared by students are serious and need to be fully reviewed. And we must make sure that there are safe places where students can share and supportive and confidential processes in place for how we handle their concerns. As the superintendent has announced, BPS has suspended its relationship with youth on board, pending an external investigation and has discontinued all aspects of the reevaluation counseling. These are important steps to make Boston Public Schools a place where all students feel welcome and safe, where they can explore their greatest dreams and face down their biggest fears. I want Boston Public Schools to be a place where all students shine, and I know we have a lot of work to get there. I'm committed to this work. The entire school committee is committed to this work. Most importantly, the superintendent is committed to this work. This has been a really long and hard year, all of us, but most especially our young people have had to take on more, quickly pivot to the moment with little certainty. We all know someone who has directly, who has been directly impacted by the pandemic. And this year taught us that things can change in an instant. But here is what I've learned from every challenge in my life. It does get better. We will be OK together one day at a time, and we have to keep pushing forth together. And I believe that this time is also an opportunity for us to rebuild BSAK and reimagine BSAK and the role of BSAK as well as the role of the school committee representative. And I am committed to doing this, and I know that all of my colleagues on the school committee are committed to that as well as our superintendent. And I just want to turn it over to the superintendent if she has anything she would like to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've done such a great job of summarizing so much of what I was thinking. You know, I just want to say to the students, we hear you. We value your voice. And we'll work together to work through this. We're taking the action steps that you've suggested, many of them. We are working in coordination with your heads of schools to ensure that you have the support that you need to help get through this. I've spoken with several of you one-on-one, and we'll continue to work with you as both individuals and also together as a body because we value you and we value what you bring. We've also contacted all of your families personally. And we have worked with our behavioral health team as well to offer support to our students. As Chairwoman Oliver Davila said, we have suspended our relationship at this point with youth on board pending an external investigation. We've suspended the evaluation counseling, and we are going to do a full auditing of BSAK, its alignment to our state policies and ensure that we move forward with students and our and our team here at BPS. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you for your remarks. I have known you all this time, and I know how seriously you take student voice and engagement and participation, as do I. And we'll continue to to work together, as you said. So we're going to move on now to our focus this evening, which is the superintendent's fiscal year 22 budget recommendation. In a moment, the BPS budget team will provide us with an FY22 budget presentation. And this will have a focus on the central budget. At this time, I just want to ask the superintendent if she has any opening remarks.
Well, Madam Chair, I am so excited about this budget. As you know, we have had many hearings so far. I'm excited that we have been able to present this to multiple communities and have had input into this from school leaders to our students, to our equity roundtable, and to this body. And Mr. Cooter and his team has done a good job taking that feedback and putting in place. We have three main areas here. We have a return. As you know, we are returning now to in-person learning and have been for a couple of weeks and excited to return our fourth through eighth graders next week. And then to recover, meaning both social emotional health and recovering as well as recovering our budget and recovering academically. And then to really reimagine and think, what have we learned this past year? How do we return stronger than we were pre-pandemic and really meet the needs of our students? And so we've been asking our teachers, our educators, our school leaders and our staff to give us feedback on what they've learned. And so we are excited to get that feedback as we launch our reopening task force for the 2021-22 school year. It's good. It's important to know that there are three different budgets that we really work with, generally speaking, which is our general fund that we get from the city. That includes some state funding, a small amount. We have a capital budget that really does a lot of work with our facilities and facility upgrades and new builds, often affectionately called Bill PPS. And then we also have federal funding that's coming. Tonight, we're really mostly talking about the general fund. And we are giving some information about some of the guardrails we think will be in the federal funding that we're doing. We will give a later update around the capital fund and some of our facility investments that we'll be making in the upcoming school year at a later meeting. The return bucket is really going to be focused mostly around health and safety issues and operational issues to return strong and and then our general ed staffing pieces. Then you have the recovery, which will be new investments that you'll see in social emotional support systems, supports for families, supports for recovery, summer learning, those kinds of supports and our academic supports in that bucket. And then the new investments that we're making are going to be mostly in that reimagine bucket for the federal funding will be in that new investment money that we have because those dollars can be spent for three years. And it's important to understand that this funding coming from December, which is the CARES2 funding, and the new funding coming from the bill that will hopefully pass this week from President Biden is meant to be a stimulus. So it's short-term money for just three years. And so you'll see a lot of different types of investments within that funding stream, and we will just give you broad stroke hint to that. But we will be going to the community and to the BPS educators to really kind of define what that reimagine bucket looks more like over the next several months. So with that, I'd like to introduce Chief Cooter to go through the general ed, but the general fund with you mostly, and then kind of reintroduce some aspects of the reimagine work that we hope to be doing with some of the federal funding.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Committee Chairwoman Oliver Davila. It is exciting to be back with you this evening. My name is Nathan Cooter, Chief Financial Officer, resident of Roselandale and proud parent of two BPS students. Thank you for the opportunity to be back again to present the FY22 budget for the Boston Public Schools. As we did at our last hearing, tonight, you're going to hear from several people who are joining us to discuss our FY22 budget and to tell us about their experience with particular investments. As both the chairwoman and superintendent mentioned, tonight's presentation is focused on central office budgets and in particular, how we're using all resources, our resources to support schools and students so that we can all return well, recover strong, and reimagine what is possible for our students. Our collective urgency to close achievement gaps was the foundation of this budget. And we started our budget process rooted in this statement from the Opportunity Achievement Gap Policy that you've heard me present and talk about in prior meetings. As COVID-19 has revealed the economic, health and education disparities many of us knew were present before the pandemic, we need to redouble our efforts to close opportunity gaps and guarantee an excellent education for all our students. We've said it before, but it's important as we start talking about the money that what we're really talking about is our focus on the students who need public education the most and providing intensive supports to those schools that are struggling to improve so that we can ensure all students have the same opportunity to achieve greatness. The FY22 budget, a proposed $1.29 billion or $1.3 billion general fund allocation features targeted investments in academics, health and wellness, and community supports. These investments are aligned to the five-year strategic plan, which we'll talk more about tonight, and the proposed funding to strategies demonstrated to improve outcomes for our students, particularly our district's highest needs students. Over 95% of the proposals represent direct services to students in schools through direct funding to schools. So that 95% of the 36 million that you see on the slide was the topic of the the schools hearing that we did several weeks ago. Combined with the the other remaining 5%, which is custodial support that we'll talk about again about tonight, 100% of those proposed investments will be immediately and directly felt in the impact for for our schools. And in two years, we're proud to say that we've transformed our foundation for quality, guaranteeing all students and school committees access to critical resources. And we're going to talk more about this investment throughout tonight and how the central office is around, is geared around supporting these investments. But it's important, it's worth noting and emphasizing that over the last two years, we've added 142 social workers and 117 family liaisons throughout the district. The path to recovery for our students and for our district will be long, but we're in a strong financial position to launch this work. Tonight, we'll be providing more information about the external funds, but we begin the discussion tonight with it by thanking the mayor and the city for their continued support for BPS. At a time when other mayors are expected to dramatic cuts to school budgets, we will progress towards these goals with new investments from Mayor Walsh and the city of Boston. And I don't think I'm overstating it, and I've said it each night, that we've done a hearing, but to say that Boston stands apart for a financial commitment to the Boston Public Schools. And so few of my colleagues throughout Massachusetts and throughout the country are in the same position for us to really think about and be focused on this idea of reimagining what's possible for our students because we start with a foundation for being able to return strong and recover well. As the superintendent mentioned, we're talking about three different sources or three different financial resources for fulfilling her vision for our students. When used thoughtfully, these three resources or these three sources of funds represent a tremendous opportunity to support students and make lasting change to our district. The first source of funding is our operating budget or what we refer to as general funds, and this is funding directly from the city. The second source of funding is federal, and BPS will receive approximately 123 million of funding from the Esser Part II Fund. And as the superintendent mentioned, we're awaiting the final allocations from the President Biden's most recent stimulus, if passed by the Senate and House again, and BPS plans to use these. And BPS plans to use these funds to address critical needs within the community due to the pandemic. Throughout the presentation tonight, you'll notice that we highlight investments that are planning on both the BPS operating budget and investments that we're planning to do on on Essar Part Two. And we're going to talk about the timeline for developing the full Essar Part Two funding proposal. But in the meantime, we're highlighting the key areas of the investment that we're moving forward now and beginning to craft this spring. And of course, as the Superintendent mentioned, the last source of funding is our capital budget, which is funding that is used to improve our facilities. As we evaluate how to use these resources, we're focused on those investments that will have an impact beyond a single year. We have an obligation as a district to develop a sustainability plan for any new investments. Particularly those paid for with the federal relief funds. For each of the funding sources, I wanted to highlight the risks associated with investments that are either misaligned to our vision or do not have a plane, do not have a plan for sustainability. Of course, the biggest risk is adding staff and using the funds without a plan for how we will sustain that staff and those resources after the federal funds end. And I would also be negligent if I didn't mention that. As we invest in supporting schools with declining enrollment. A big topic for last hearing, but one that is important overall to this budget. It's important to note that while we we need a plan for how we're going to address the overall capacity. And we still may need to reduce capacity in our system that is no longer needed because of enrollment declines that we've sustained over the last few years. At this point, I would like to introduce to Dr. Yvonne McCray, our Director of External Funds and Grants, to talk in more detail about the federal funding, how we're using it this year and how we plan to use it over the course of the next few years.
Thank you Nate. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Cassielos and all on this webinar. The federal funds that we have received so far is to help the district to prevent, prepare for and respond to the impacts of COVID nineteen. So far, we have received thirty-two point three million dollars of the CARES Act for the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. This funding provides for emergency relief to address the impact of COVID nineteen. And we have allocated approximately five million dollars to private and parochial schools based in Boston part of federal requirements. We are also utilizing these funds for summer learning opportunities, personal protective gears and health equipment. The city was generous, as was mentioned by Nate and Dr. Cassielos, twenty-three point two million dollars, which is used directly to help with eligible expenses in fiscal year twenty-one. Essar Two was was voted in December by the federal government and we are going to receive approximately a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. These expenses will run from July first, twenty-twenty-one through nine thirty twenty-three. Next slide, please. To date for FY cost, about twenty-six point twenty-six million dollars has been expended. And on summer learning and distance learning, health and safety for students, crew books to support remote learning, software and curriculum to support remote learning, and also some facility improvements, PPE and air purification and circulation equipment. This include the thirty-two point three million plus the twenty-three point two million received from the city cares. We anticipate to use another thirty-four million to support students and staff testing, staff vaccinations, academic tutoring, learning ports and additional PPE and facilities upgrades. This cost will continue into FY twenty-two. Next slide, please. The Essar Two Fund, which will start in July of this year in our FY twenty-two budget. The federal government put them into three buckets. It will address academics, social, emotional, which is really health and wellness and operations. In the academics bucket, it will address learning loss or learning lag for students and will use the money to support tutoring in early literacy and math and summer learning and after-school programs. In the health and wellness buckets, it's really recovery and renewal for the mental health and engagement of our students. An additional ten thousand dollars was added by Desi from the commissioner to also address mental health issues for students. The operating buckets will address remediation, access and acceleration, which will include educational technology, ventilation improvement and more supplies and services for our students. We are hoping to learn more about the funds from President Biden. And we're not sure how much we'll be receiving, but most of the fund will address, again, learning loss, homeless students, summer programs, after-school programs, and more funding might come in for special education in the form of the IDEA Part B grants. And now I'll turn it over again to Nate. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Throughout this presentation, we'll be highlighting planned investments on Essar Part Two, as I mentioned. And some of the ideas we are starting to engage and discuss with the community. What we wanted to do is focus on our framework of return, recover and reimagine. But we also need to incorporate and respond to the federal guidance that Yvonne just laid out for everyone. Which is really about the intent of this funding from the federal government. And so this slide is meant to summarize how the two frameworks interact with each other and are complementary. So it's not meant to be two different ways of thinking about the funds. What we've really done is really think about in return, recover and reimagine framework. How we are also thinking about academics, social, emotional and operations. And so throughout the spring, what we wanted to do is provide a draft timeline for the community and for the school committee about how we're planning to discuss this proposal and discuss the use of this hundred and twenty-three million and potentially two or three times that from the the president's most recent stimulus bill. And so what we're talking about is on March twenty-fourth, we are asking the school committee to vote on our operating budget. That vote does not actually go towards our external funds. As you all know, we come back in August and vote to actually approve the the grant allocations from Title One IDEA, some of the other federal grants that we receive on an annual basis. This year, we are gearing our process towards another vote from the school committee for the application to be due to to Desi, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, July thirtieth. And so we anticipate in August having a full completed application. And here's when the community and the school committee can expect to be engaged on how we plan to use these resources to support, to support our schools and our students. With that, I want to turn it over to Miriam Rubin, our Budget Director, to return to how we think about and how we're supporting our operating budget.
Thank you, Chief Cooter. While the challenges facing our district are daunting, we feel fortunate for the resources that Chief Nathan Cooter and Dr. Yvonne McCray just have have just outlined. They will be critical in enabling us to do the important work needed to meet the principles upon which this budget was founded, to return, recover and reimagine what is possible for our students. Our presentation tonight will dive deeper into the initiatives and infrastructure we presented in our initial budget proposal. And as Chief Cooter mentioned, it will give us the opportunity to hear from a number of departments doing the hard work on the ground to ensure that our initiatives and investments at the school and student level are set up for success. We will also take some time to come back to the vision we've laid out in our five-year strategic plan upon which this budget is deeply rooted. Next slide, please. As we mentioned in earlier remarks, we will begin an engagement process around spending priorities for the funding we are receiving in Essar Two and Three this spring. At the same time, in order to gain a full picture of our proposed budget, it is important to understand not only what we have proposed for FY twenty-two in our operational budget, but also the places where we are anticipating drawing on our Essar funding for priorities we know are essential to return, recover and reimagine. To that end, we will use this presentation to outline our current thinking around both general, general operating funds and Essar funds as they stand right now, which includes twelve million dollars in new investments to ensure we will return well. Fifty million in new investments to ensure we recover strong. And twenty million set aside for us to reimagine what is possible. The first focus in our budget and in our work is to return well by getting all students and staff back into buildings as we are currently doing. When it is and continue to be doing in a way that is safe. And then getting back to the work that we love so we can return even stronger. In order to do this, we pose the following questions that we'll think be thinking about for the remainder of the year into the next and that we're framing investments in return around. What will it take to reopen schools safely for all students every day? What COVID response investments will need to continue? And what work do we start that we pause, that we need to restart that we paused due to COVID?
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. If you don't mind just going a little bit slower, that would be really great. Thank you.
Yes, happy to. Thank you for the reminder. Our first priority here starts with ensuring both that our physical space is safe and ready for our students. And that we are set up to maintain the safe environment for the upcoming fiscal year. In order to provide clean building conditions, we are adding twenty custodians to our schools. We are also increasing funding towards existing maintenance contracts so that we can provide the facilities improvements that our students deserve. Additionally, we have set aside funding in Essar to continue implementing the cleaning protocol established during COVID, such as installation of hand sanitizer, provision of PPE and bus sanitization. Because we know that these protocols will last long after COVID is over. Finally, we know that being able to regularly test and maintain air quality is essential to staff and student safety. And we have set aside the funds to ensure that this continues. Equally, if not more important than physical space, is the physical health of our students. So with that, I want to hand it over now to our Assistant Superintendent of Student and Community Impact, Aleech Niyeli Tabora, who oversees our health services team within the Division of Accountability, to talk about the investments we are making to support the physical health of our students through health services.
Thank you, Miriam. Hello, School Committee Chair Superintendent, BPS community, buenas noches. As Miriam mentioned, my name is Aleech Niyeli Tabora. I have the honor of overseeing health services. The proposed investment in FY twenty-two builds on past investment in school nurses that have led us to our current team of a hundred fifty-nine nurses and six health paras, all of whom play a critical role in ensuring our students and staff a safe return to school. In order to support our school nurses and continue the ongoing work of ensuring evidence-based health safety protocols are in place and up to date during this pandemic, we have invested in a strong administrative team. Aligned with our commitment to increase representation across leadership and through a collaborative process engaging multiple stakeholders, we have in health services now a new trilingual project manager, an assistant director in Dr. Arlene Swarma Honee, and a multilingual senior director in Dr. Jenny Lobo Lopes, who was once a student at Madison Park. Health Services has been instrumental in planning and implementing a school-based testing for students and staff. Student pool testing began yesterday, March eighth, for students with consent who will test weekly for ongoing surveillance through the state-funded program. The district has committed over two million to support staff testing and vaccine rollout for staff. Beginning March fourteenth, BPS will open our first vaccine clinics for BPS employees at the BCYF Gallivan Center Community Center in Mattapan. And now that I've outlined how we're addressing the physical support by we have nurses that we're providing to ensure safe, a safer term for our community. Mark Racine, our Chief Information Officer, will talk about the technology investments we are proposing to support the academic return.
Good evening. As you know, over the last year, we've made a number of investments and improvements toward technology to improve access to the internet as well as access to home technology. It was a critical part of our response to COVID and will be a critical response as we return to school. So as you know, the the big bulk of our work in the beginning was in supporting our one-to-one program that will be continuing moving forward. As you can see, I'm starting from the bottom. We'll be continuing with a support for one-to-one and that will be grades K zero through twelve for all students in the Boston Public Schools to participate in. The other investment at the top is continuing our access to internet services. This this year was through a variety of programs, state, federal and private grants. And we'll be continuing those grants, but also continuing our investment to ensure that students have access to home internet, whether that is home broadband service or Wi-Fi hotspot. And then finally, through a number of different departments, Office of English Language Learners, Academics and Art Department, we will continue expanded access for online learning tools. Many of the tools were critical in our response to COVID, but have become a core part of a teacher's classroom. And so we're excited to continue many of the applications that we found success with this year through future years. With that, I'll be turning it over to Charles Grandson to talk about a return to our strategic planning work.
Thanks, Mark. We are really excited to be able to share the work that's been underway around, even in the midst of the COVID nineteen pandemic, continuing to focus on the work as it relates to our strategic plan implementation. We have remained focused on our six commitments. And this, the takeaway I want to leave you with with this particular slide is that our strategic plan is a living document. And we continue to have processes in place to make sure we go from the larger plan all the way down to impacting the lives of our students. Central Office Departments paused the work around work plans early in July of this past summer to make sure that we all were focused on what was most important. That was returning students to school safely. And we quickly picked back up on looking at what are the strategic areas in the strategic plan that we need to remain focused on even as we get through the COVID nineteen pandemic. Quality school plans were put together by school leaders that show clear alignment to the strategic plan as well as our OAG policy. And ultimately, many students were supported with student success plans throughout the pandemic to ensure that they got what they needed and that we were focused on continuing to prevent further opportunity gaps. Next slide. Might have to hit it a few times. There you go. Okay. Our strategic plan monitoring and execution is something that is critical to us knowing if we're making progress and being able to hold ourselves accountable. But also, we aim to have a dashboard like this shared very soon with the public so that we can continue to be held accountable as we implement our BPS strategic vision. What you're looking at here is a dashboard that reflects the work plans that central office departments have been submitting. And this is a system that's not perfected yet. It's something that we are continuing to develop, but wanted to share with you as an example of the way we we intend to monitor strategic plan implementation and execution, especially also as it aligns to the FY twenty-two budget. And so as we further develop this dashboard, what you'll be able to see is how the areas we're focusing on in the strategic plan. Is how the areas we're focusing on in the strategic plan are supported through resource allocation. There is here, as you might see in the center, our six commitments. And the bar is going across demonstrate the number of work plans that amplify the work in those areas. And so it's not all inclusive, but gives us a sense of where the, the work is being focused. Next slide. Similarly, we is just as important that we prioritize our opportunity and achievement gaps policy. And the policy implementation and that work was. There's good foundation built for that work and what we've been able to do since we had our new strategic plan is to align that work. So that those goals, there were some coherence around strategic plan implementation and O A G policy implementation. And so similarly. This demonstrates the O A G policy goals at the top. And the frequency by which the plans, work plans submitted by central office departments. Are addressing the specific goals and then the policy objectives down at the bottom. Thank you, and I regret that I'm not sure who I'm passing it to.
Thank you, Dr. Grandson, and thank you, Mark and Alech as well. One of the things that we wanted to highlight. This evening is that we're returning to the core work that we had begun before. COVID nineteen struck because we realized that that is the foundation for how we're going to start our path to recovery. And so the highlights from the nursing supports, the highlights from. The strategic planning is to show you that this is a, that there's continuity from what we did in the current fiscal year. And what our plans were for this fiscal year and what we plan to return to when we go back in the fall for FY twenty two. And so here is the outline of what we have considered as part of that. Funding allocated in the return bucket, both from the FY twenty two budget, as I mentioned in the first column. Which represents our operating funds and then the second column, which represents our proposal right now around S R part two. Bringing us back to focus on this year's theme of return, recover and reimagine. Our focus for the recover is to ensure that school communities have what they need to not only repair the damage done by COVID nineteen. But also to create the conditions in which students and families can thrive. In order to do this, we see it as essential to provide both stability to school communities despite declining enrollment. And to invest in social, emotional, academic and family supports for students. We know that COVID nineteen has had a disproportionate impact on our students of color, on English learners and on students with disabilities. We also know that there's been a disproportionate impact for students and families experiencing poverty. In order to guide them and help them through recovery from this disruption. We must prepare a multi-year plan to support students in three critical areas. We're first going to discuss what our multi-tiered strategy will be for academic recovery and support. We're going to dive into some more of the health and wellness supports. And then finally, we're going to talk about the community supports and how we are wrapping around care and creating. More opportunities for support through partnerships and through direct supports to families. Last year, we laid out our vision for the FY twenty one budget proposal, focusing on. Improving what Richard Elmore first referred to as the instructional core. The instructional core has three ingredients, the teacher and the student in the presence of content. It is in the relationship between these three. And not the qualities of any one of them by themselves that determines the quality and extent of learning. This was true pre-pandemic. It has been true during the pandemic, regardless of how we are serving students and in what setting we're educating them. And it will certainly be true for the path to recovery. So our path to recovery begins by returning to and strengthening the instructional core. By executing on three basic strategies. The first is to increase the knowledge and skill of teachers. The second is to ensure high quality culturally and linguistically sustaining curriculum materials. And the third is to alter the relationship of the student to the content and the teacher. Of course, what happens in a classroom or on Zoom in this year doesn't exist separate from the daily lives. And the interactions we have throughout. Students are supported and influenced by families. They're also supported by their communities. Teachers need support and work within the structures of their school and of our district. And the content must be supported by instructional frameworks and professional development. To ensure that teachers are successfully leveraging them in their design. And to be successful in our long road ahead to overcome the disruption of this pandemic. We must align and address our systems and structures in service of students and of high-quality instruction. We wanted to provide some focus areas and the developing investments that are focused in each of these three areas. For students, we're thinking about creative ways to provide direct supports. This may mean individualized tutoring, but it will certainly start by understanding individual student needs. And developing and providing resources to help them recover from the disruption of the last year. For teachers, we're investing in the essential teacher practices. This is our, in our framework and our approach to curricular frameworks and making sure the teachers have the tools that they need. And time to work with their staff, their fellow colleagues and collaborate and develop ways. They're going to be encountering something that they've never encountered before yet again, which is a. Students who are in need of recovery and who are re-engaging with in-person learning. We're started to see it in the last two weeks. I know I have been thrilled to have my, my students back in school. The last two weeks, but this is going to be an ongoing process for them to, to almost relearn their practice and relearn. Because of the, the, in the needs of the students and the situation we find ourselves in. And then, of course, content equity. Really what we're talking about is instructional materials in quest and, and making sure that we have high quality. Resources, whether it has to do with learning environments, texts, books and access to online resources. We're really providing high quality and, and, and giving our teachers the best resources that they, they can get. To serve their students. Wanted to take a minute to highlight some of the work that's already begun because it's important that. As we begin to plan for S R part two, we're really thinking about this summer. We're not waiting for the following summer. We're not waiting for the fall to think about how we. Support our students. And from K two through twelfth grade, we're really working on academic acceleration programs through partnerships with Boston After School. And beyond, and my brother's keeper. We've been talking about these pods to be able to provide mentoring and supports for students. Our goal is to reach over six thousand students starting this spring. And then this summer, B P S will be running five unique initiatives around our summer programming. We have a unique portfolio and of summer programs. That are meant to access students in different grade levels, including summer early focus about our earliest learners, those students who are four. Five, six years old. All the way up to our fifth quarter summer learning academies and our fifth quarter credit recovery, which is focused on our secondary students. Making sure that they have the path to recovery to be on track for graduating on time and being prepared for life after, after. High school in college or career. With that, we're, we're going to hand it over again to Alech Niyela Tabora, our Assistant Superintendent. Of Student and Community Impact to talk about hub schools and our investments in social workers. And in particular, thinking about how our central office is going to be supporting those school-based resources to make sure that they're. Well-leveraged and meeting the needs of our students.
Thank you. I'm very excited to share with you our work around the Boston Community Hub School Strategy. This investment really bridges our recovery efforts with our commitment to reimagine schooling in Boston. We know that the dual pandemics have forced us to confront the fact that we have functioned this far. In a way that sustains the status quo fraught with inequities and injustice. We're also reminded that in order to move towards an equitable recovery, we must listen to those closest to the pain and injustice. It's my honor to lead a district team of three women of color who are also proud B P S alumni and B P S parents. Joanna Tian and Renee Omalade, working alongside school communities and partners like the Y M C A. To launch the Boston Community Hub Schools. Building off of years of community school research and integrating our commitment to racial equity. Boston Community Hub Schools moves us away from deficit-based paternalistic approaches. Towards asset-based strategies to partnering with families, students and community. To advance recovery in a way that honors their assets, needs and aspirations. And enables them and us to shape our healing. Grounded firmly in culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. This investment enables us to deeply engage with two cohorts of schools and reimagine our schools as spaces for healing. Innovation and liberation, where students and adults learn from and with each other and activate agency. Such that students are equipped to critically engage with their world and transform it. While this investment focuses on two regions, our vision is that every B P S school will become a Boston Community Hub School. Twelve school-based hub school managers will work deeply with the Grove Hall Alliance and the dual-language schools. Focusing on some of the student communities hardest hit by the pandemics. Managers will work closely with students, families, school leaders, partners. Leveraging the lessons learned from longstanding hub schools work by some of the schools. And the investments in our family liaisons and social workers to facilitate opportunities and supports for our scholars. Next slide, please. And so building off of that, our investment in social workers is one that recognizes the complexity of trauma. And the various modes of healing that must be in, that must integrate the collectivist indigenous African and eastern cultures of our students. Building from our work with the transformation social workers this year. We're using a racial equity planning tool to implement a process that yields, again, a diverse cadre of social workers. With culturally and linguistic capacity and a racial equity lens to serve and partner with our students and families. As we collectively heal. Social workers will focus half of their time providing direct services to students and families. While the other half will be focused on mitigating the conditions that exacerbate or create the need for these services. In order to support social workers in this role, we're developing an arc of learning. That focuses on building their capacity for this anti-racist systems work. As well as restorative practices and we're working closely with our colleagues in the restorative justice. Team and the Office of Opportunity Gaps. Carmen Calderon O'Hara, our Director of Social Worker, has been working very closely with area universities. To develop a pipeline of diverse equity-driven social workers, ready to take on this work with our families. Finally, a waiver process was conducted to ensure that this investment was responsive to our school communities. Through this process, fifteen schools were approved. A waiver that allowed them to reinvest part or all of their allocation by demonstrating their capacity to provide clinical mental health support. And to their students and families through a submission of a racial equity planning tool vetted by their Equity Roundtable. And or school site council. Here to share more about our family liaison investment, our Chief of Student, Family and Community Advancement, Monica Roberts.
Thank you, Alech. This year, the Office of Student, Family and Community Advancement supported the hiring of over thirty family liaisons. We were able to leverage our strong network along with the Office of Human Capital to recruit linguistically and racially diverse individuals. With experience and family engagement. Our applicants were vetted through both a central and school process centrally. They were required to go do two interview processes and then including a performance task as well as a language assessment. To certify their linguistic proficiency in the language that they identified. Often individuals working with families are seen as the lone person responsible for this work in schools. But through the strong partnership and work across central departments, family liaisons have been able to partner with social workers and other school staff. To support students and families. This has been particularly important during a pandemic where they have partnered to support basic needs of families. Help teachers make connections with families whose students were not engaged. As well as support the, the work of our office in terms of ensuring that families. Had the training and support they needed to access the technology and, and support their learns with using it. Liaisons were supported this year through professional development on a bi-weekly basis. They were also able to access coaching and technical assistance through our team. We hired a coach to support this initial set of liaisons and as we move forward. We will, we are reorganizing our family engagement facilitators regionally. So that they can support and coach the, the additional liaisons as they onboard. The coach that we have in place this year is our family engagement facilitators have robust and deep experiences at the school. And district level as well as in our city and community. So that they will to help our liaisons as they try to navigate resources as well as systems. So we believe that will be a strong partnership between our offices. The last thing I will say is that. We're, we're really excited to think about how this work also will support the work of the hub school model and, and working with our colleagues. As they're doing this work, it's, it's been really good to be able to partner across this so that family engagement is everyone's business. And not just the, the business of the family liaison. So with that, I will pass it to Mr. Cooter.
Thank you, Chief Roberts, and thank you to everyone who came. You know, when we started to lay out this presentation tonight, we wanted to make sure that we were bringing multiple voices to the table. As you know, a budget of this size in an organization like this really represents the hard work of. Hundreds of people across multiple central office departments. And so we wanted to use tonight to sort of share. The microphone quite literally so that you could meet some of the people who are really doing the work. And it would have been sort of easy for me to provide highlights of these investments with some talking points, but. Really wanted to take some time and introduce the different people so that they could, they could really. Explain the work and the richness behind their thinking and how though that work is really supporting the schools. And so on the recover budget, here you can see the breakdown of dollars for recover in investments. And also a preview of some of the investments that we plan to put forth on the S R part two funding. Highlighted by, of course, we start talking about the academic side, we're really talking about having targeted investments. Not only for all students through tutoring, vacation and summer programming, some of the highlights that I mentioned tonight. But also really focusing on interventions for students with disabilities and having targeted and specific invention, interventions. For our English learners, recognizing that those students are most affected by the disruption and needing to make sure. That we are aligning our work and focusing on work on those students who need public education the most. The final segment and, and we're coming to a close. So for those of you watching the clock. We wanted to take a moment, of course, in all of this is to really think about what it means to reimagine what is possible for our students. We're going to, of course, restart or reopen strong. We are going to come back for our students, but we also need to be thinking about how we're coming back as a district. That is better than the district two years ago. That we can't have used this work to pause the important work of changing the way we serve our kids, closing opportunity achievement gaps. And of course, there were a number of things that I presented at the last hearing around what that could mean. But it's important for us to think about what are the challenges and structures that we need to address. We've talked about the significant impact on enrollment. We thought about how enrollment declines are affecting the way we approach schools. And so we are supporting schools, but we also need to then turn that work towards reimagining what it could mean. To not just put the patchwork together, not just to come back and figure out how to balance next year's budget. But to really come back in a position where we are accelerating the learning students because we're able to do more in future years. We have tremendous resources from the federal government to be able to think about this and to make key, high-leverage changes to the way we approach the work. We're thinking about that in a number of key areas. We, of course, are focused on facilities and learning environments. We know that they impact our students. We know that they were particularly challenging for us as we think about reopening, as we come back. It's been, it's been plaguing our conversations about the antiquated buildings that we have. This administration has done more than administrations in the past to invest in our school quality. We're going to continue to double down on that. We're also thinking about how to rethink how we approach educating our students through inclusive strategies. And to think about, the superintendent has asked us and challenged us to think about, what are school-based investments that we can make? To give the dollar and the resources to the people who are closest to the students, who stand the best chance of creating tailored academic, social, emotional, and family investments in our students to guide the path to recovery. And so, we're in the, in the early stages from the timeline that I laid out for you. We're in those really early stages of saying what this could look like. But we are asking the community to reimagine with us to remove those structures so that we're not coming back to where we were. We're coming back to a place we've never been before. And that's exciting, and it's difficult sometimes for us to transition in the midst of this pandemic, but it's important for the community to know that we are both committed to restarting strong and focused on what it will mean after the pandemic. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Miriam to talk about some of the resources that are available online and how you can learn more about our budget.
Thank you. One of our main priorities in the finance team is to strive for ensuring transparency in our work. All of the information presented tonight is available online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You will be able to find tonight's presentation along with district-wide and school-specific budget documents, which have been posted for all school committee hearing. School-by-school comparisons of weighted student funding, total allocations for each school, and the preliminary budget for FY21 are all available. And we also want to highlight that translated versions of all of these documents are also on the site. Here, you'll see our full, our full budget is available online, but we also just want to make sure that you have a snapshot of a table that will give you a sense of the main categories of our budget broken down. So if there's one table that you would like to look at to get a sense of what that snapshot is, it's here. You can see here that we've broken our budget down into four main categories. The first is direct school expenses, which is where the majority of our spending sits. The next is school services budgeted centrally. So those are items in the central budget, but actually provided to our schools directly. So that includes school custodians, for example. Additionally, we have central administration, which includes salaries for central administration, such as superintendent. My salary, for example, sits on that line. And as you can see there, that makes up about five percent of our budget. And then finally, services for non-BPS students, including transportation for charter schools. So we know that the budget in this presentation is just the beginning of a process to equitably distribute resources across the district. And we also know that it is essential that we are simultaneously examining not just how we budget our dollars, but also how we spend them. To that end, I now want to welcome our relatively new, so welcome, Business Manager Naveen Reddy, who I am honored to share the finance team with. And he's going to share some thinking around our move towards more equitable procurement process.
Thank you, Miriam. Good evening, everyone. My name is Naveen Reddy. I am the new business manager. I started right after Thanksgiving, and I've been in my current role for two and a half months now. I've had the opportunity and privilege to work for the city for over sixteen years in various roles, in various departments, and I'm also a proud BPS parent. We in the Business Services Team, our goal is to help schools and central departments spend their non-personal dollars strategically and in compliance. I'm here to talk to you about the last slide in our presentation today and something which is very dear to our hearts. One of the main topics, I remember when I was interviewing for my current role, Nate asked me was about equity and how to bring equity into procurement. And I talked a lot about the work I was already doing and some of my vision on where we can take the district towards equitable procurement. And with our superintendent's leadership, we bring equity in all that we do. So the Boston Public Schools is committed to ensuring that all the procurement processes and additions include vendors who are people of color and/or women. By sending, by spending district dollars equitably, we support our students' families and communities' economic well-being and act on the knowledge that household income is a key predictor of positive educational outcomes. Also, that vendors are offered the opportunity to partner in preparing our students for college, career, and life. We have partnered with lots of stakeholders, including Becky Sosters Aston, Superintendent of Equity in the Office of Equity, Selena Barias-Millner, the Director of Equity and Inclusion in the Mayor's Office of Economic Development, and the City Hall CFO Teams, who we meet with on a weekly basis to roll out equitable procurement initiatives and partner with them to roll out and expand these initiatives, including the new executive order the mayor signed a couple of weeks ago. So what have we done and where are we going? Over the past few weeks, we have rolled out to all of the BPS procurement personnel in schools and central offices, the city's Directory of Certified Businesses Owned by Women, Minorities, Veterans, Small Local Businesses, who are certified by the Office of Economic Development at the city as a tool to use for all of our procurement needs. We've created a plan to roll out the mayor's executive order to support equitable procurement procedures, where city departments must consult with the cities with the certified business directly to identify at least one certified business that customarily performs or supplies relevant work to include in its vendor outreach as part of each procurement solicitation process. And when spending dollars which are exempt from Massachusetts general laws, we have ensured that minority and women-owned businesses are included in the procurement process. And we're happy to discuss more details with you. So we have one remaining budget hearing next week that we will present on the capital budget. And then the school committee gets to vote on the budget on March 24th. So with that, I'll turn over to Chairperson Oliver Devilla for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all the team for a really great presentation and all the work that has gone into that. We are going to move into public comment now, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have seventeen speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. To the attendees who are listening to simultaneous interpretation on a different Zoom channel, please move over to the English Language Channel when the public testimony is being translated from a non-English language. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you are signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comments, and that will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with our students, starting with Jason Diaz, Ari Rodriguez, and Haile Alvino. If you can, please raise your hands. Jason Diaz.
Jason actually could not be here yet to leave. He was on, but he needed to leave by six.
Okay. Is Ari and Haile with us?
Apologies, Liz. I guess Jason is still on but delayed. I don't know if you want to keep going, and then if he pops on, you can just go back to him.
Okay.
Thanks.
We also have John Mudd, Robert Jenkins, Joe Medina, and Kendall Miller. If you can, please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. John Mudd.
Good evening, John Mudd, Boston School Advocate from Cambridge, Massachusetts. I'll try to be quick. I've always maintained there are two critical strategies to help eliminate achievement and opportunity gaps, teacher diversity and professional development. So I have two questions at least, and then a comment. In this budget, is there increased support for the pipelines to develop diverse teachers? Years ago, the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force policy recommended taking the accelerated community-to-teacher and other teacher development programs to scale. Is that done in this current budget? Secondly, on professional development, over the past years, we fragmented and cut professional development. This year, there's been a significant increase in classroom instructional coaches, although I see sometimes the name changes to transitional coaches or transformation coaches in some areas. That should be celebrated. But I would say that there should be a place in the budget to look at the overall investment in professional development. Could you do that so that we can see how much and in what ways the district is investing in this crucial area? This brings me to something, my perennial kind of comment, and that is, it's a sort of a suggestion and request. We tend to focus on the additional funds, the two million added to English learners and the five million for special education. How are we spending the total budgets in these areas and why? What about the hundred and ten million spent on English learning or the three hundred and thirty million on students with disabilities? What are the overall core strategies, the challenges, the new approaches in these and other areas? I've called this for years, a program budget. A program budget is more understandable, I believe, to parents, the public, to you, I would say. John McDonough did this years ago when he was Finance Director. Why can't we get it done today? One reason, I guess, is that you and the school committee actually don't think it important enough to understand total spending in this way, or you'd ask for it and get it. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Our next speakers are Robert Jenkins, followed by Joe Medina, Kendall Miller, and Tarina Harrison. If you can, please raise your hands. Robert Jenkins with us. Joe Medina. Kendall. Tarina Harrison.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, hi, good evening. Hi, my name is Tarina Harrison. I am from the Roxbury area. My child goes to Orchard Gardens Pilot School in Roxbury. I'm here to talk about the budget cut for Orchard Gardens. There are many things that can be done with the budget if it do not get cut. Orchard Gardens need new desks and chairs for all students and staff. Some of the desks are broken, and the chairs have tennis balls on them. New blinds for the classrooms. Sunlight gets into the students' eyes when the teacher is at the board or in front of the classroom trying to teach. It is hard for our, our kids to see what's on the board if the sun is in their eyes. I know many of the classrooms have been like this for years. Our school needs school supplies, cleaning products, and sanitary needs such as paper, pencils, pens, soap, hand sanitizer, paper towels. The auditorium chairs are busted up. It would be nice to get some new ones along with the sound system in the auditorium, for it is low and/or is very staticky when someone is talking. The school needs new physical education equipment for all students, especially students with disabilities. And last, the school has mice. It would be nice for the school to have extermination for at least three to four times out of the school year. Mice carry disease, and they're dirty. And I wouldn't want any kids at the school catching anything from these little rodents. If the budget gets cut, the majority of these things on my list will not get met at the school. So I'm asking, please don't cut the budget out. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. I believe our students are with us. Jason Diaz, Ari Rodriguez, and Haile Alvino.
I see Jason raising his hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, sorry, I'm still in the meeting. I didn't leave.
Did you want to testify?
Yeah, can I start?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is Jason Diaz. I am a senior at Madison Park High School, a youth community organizer, associate at Latina, and a resident of East Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Casillas, for addressing your commitment to youth voice across the district at the beginning of tonight's meeting. I'm here to share about ethnic studies and how we can continue pushing forward with this work in the city and statewide. First of all, I would like to thank the school board and the superintendent for working with the BTU and realizing the goal of creating the position and hiring a full-time ethnic studies coach, coordinator to train teachers on a ninth-grade ethnic studies curriculum. We are so glad to see these wins in the fight for ethnic studies in BPS. And we want to ask you for continued support to expand the ethnic studies model, which BTU has proposed. The BPS Youth would also like to see courses which build on a ninth-grade Intro to Ethnic Studies class. We would like to see options for students to take Latin X Studies, Black Studies, and Asian-American Studies. We would like to advocate for the integration and support of district partnerships with CBOs like Associate Latina, who specialize in working with these communities to enhance learning and opportunities to connect students to this work beyond the classroom. Associate Latina Youth and alumni had the opportunity to share the organization's work that has been done over the past teen- that has been done over the past teen years to push for ethnic studies courses, more teachers that reflect the students' cultural backgrounds and how to prepare teachers to teach these students these courses effectively on a statewide level. We hope you were able to check out the article published in last Friday's issue of the Mission Hill Gazette. Lastly, we would like to mention a few recent wins in a statewide fight for ethnic studies in Massachusetts. Thanks to the efforts of grassroots organizers from cities across Massachusetts, two bills have been filed to support anti-racist education. These bills have also been co-sponsored by several representatives such as Nika Elucardo, Jason Lewis, and Erica Uter Hoven. We ask that BPS continue to support these state efforts and lead it as an example for ethnic studies in other cities and towns within Massachusetts. This organizing effort is supported by a youth-led statewide coalition, working to garner support for these bills. As a youth leader in this coalition, I would like to say it is important that we continue to involve youth in the decision-making process that will affect the next generations of students in BPS. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jason. And I'm sorry, but I have to say, to make sure everybody knows that we're among a rock star here, who actually is a posse scholar and is a finalist to be a Gates Scholar. So congratulations, Jason, on all your hard work to get here.
And hopefully a future BPS teacher, maybe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Next, we'll hear from Ari Rodriguez and Haile Alvino.
Good evening. My name is Ariana Rodriguez. I am a senior at Margarita Menez Academy and a youth community organizer, associate Latina, and a resident of South Boston.
Good evening. My name is Jassiel Alvino. I'm a sophomore at Fenway High School, a youth community organizer, associate Latina, and as a resident at High Park. Today, I'm here to advocate for the BPS budget to include more immediate funding for more guidance counselors. We would like to see more investments for this goal. We are also here to ask for removal as of SROs in our public schools and reallocate this funding for our students' needs.
We wanted to say that we are happy to see 95 new social workers positions and ask you to please keep adding more social workers to the budget every year. I would like to remind you of the solution proposed by the Providence Alliance for Student Safety, has come up for their district. They're asking for an increase in the number of support staff such as mental health providers, nurses, and guidance counselors in their schools. BPS should follow suit. At Margarita Menez Academy, a dual-language high school in Jamaica playing with services, a predominant group of ELO students, our students need even more support such as family license and guidance counselors. Typically, our school is made up of 400 students that one single counselor who is taxed with providing adequate resources and support for all of our students' necessities. However, last year, when a traumatic event occurred and a student was killed in our school, there were over 10 counselors who were brought in to provide emotional support for students to process their aftermath of this event. After this event, I was emotionally grieved and was extremely helpful with the counselors. We should always have the support of those counselors, not just when something publicly traumatic happens in our school. Citizen BPS are facing similarly traumatic experiences at home and they provide private on a day-to-day basis. We urge you to add more guidance counselors to the budget for 2022.
In order to ensure the safety of our blacks and brown students, we should also prevent school resources officers from arresting students and instead implant transformative justice practices, which do not create a criminal record for us. Having school police in schools has led to higher rates of arrest, discipline, and violence. There is no possibility to remove SROs in BPS, and it should be the priority to change the job descriptions of these officers. Could we reimagine their role to support students' social and emotional development or be part of BPS restoring the justice team? It is known that the facts of students of color are arrested disproportionately higher rates. The black or overly punitive, zero-tolerance policies that can lead to arrest of relatively minor misbehaviors such as vandalism or classroom arguments. We need to support our students and address the root causes of the issues they are facing instead of reacting to behavioral issues with policing efforts.
Lastly, throughout my last three years as a youth leader at Sociedad Latina, I have been able to be part of well-rounded and holistic support system. I have access to academic and social slash emotional supports, as well as safe spaces to voice personal concerns I have at home. BPS should continue to work with community-based orgs to support for our students and provide a holistic approach to supporting our students. We would like to see more staff added to this department so that all schools have external partners and not just some schools. I have found a welcoming and nurturing community at Sociedad Latina, and I would like to advocate for BPS to continue working with school partners to provide the safe spaces for our students.
In conclusion, Sociedad Latina Counselor, Non-CAPS Campaign is evacuating the BPS. One, use the proposal budget that funds SROs to reallocate that to increase the number of guidance counselors and other support staffs. Number two, if removal of SROs is not possible at the time, BPS should change the job descriptions of these officers to focus implementing transformative justice practices, which do not pull students on any school-to-prison pipelines.
BPS should continue to work with school partners to create safe community spaces for the healing and holistic wellbeing of our BPS students. Community orgs provide academic support, mentoring, college access, tutoring, after-school, and summer arrangement. We request that you continue to work with partners and expand the support staff in these departments. Lastly, we are asking for BPS to form a working group that is made up of students, parents, teachers, and other stakeholders to review Kira Rosen, come up with ideas for changing the role of SROs in an effort to ensure a transparent and equitable process for reviewing SROs job descriptions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both. If you could email your comments to me, I can share them with the committee because there was a lot of good information there. Thank you. Our next speakers are Imaris Matias, Sharon Hinton, Sarah Parker, and Ursula Alston. If you could, please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Imaris?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Imaris Matias. I live in Southern area. I have two children, one of them is at Orchard Gardens School. I'm asking the school district to please not to cut the budget at Orchard Gardens. I'm here tonight to let you know what I think Orchard Gardens budget should not be cut. OG has so much to offer for kids to benefit from it. A great music program, also a wonderful art program. But this is not enough for the school. I know from in fact, a lot of kids would like to have a swimming pool and area grounds that can be built. It will be amazing to have a swimming team, also a track field. Kids love to run. And have that incorporated to the school will bring us kids to be more interested in sports. Why not a greenhouse? Kids would like to learn how to grow fruit in veggies during all seasons and have them to love the environment and have a healthy lifestyle. This is why I think a school budget should not be cut. Please think about our kids' future and also let them have the opportunities we couldn't have in our past. Just think about this. Having these element sources can help to build a better community, to have a healthy mind, even eliminating violence around our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Boston School Committee, Superintendent Casillas, and School Department Administrators. This is my second budget hearing. Watching this, you guys have a Herculean task. Amazing work, great ideas, couple of questions and a couple of comments briefly. One is, I didn't hear any discussion about pilot funds that I understand the city council is working towards, and I think that some of the budget shortfalls, once that is addressed, could possibly help with the budget, which is changing because of the pandemic. The other thing is, I haven't heard any mention of, and I'm sure it's been thought about, any academic accommodations for the 58% of African-American students who are failing, the students who 40% weren't even attending classes during school. And I guess the summer program is meant to catch these students up. But I think the students who are the older teens tend to want to have jobs during that same time. And so I'm wondering if there is some kind of creative partnership with the Department of Youth and Engagement Employment so that students can actually get paid to actually attend classes as an incentive. So that's just a thought. The last thing is that while I heard young people and students speaking, it hurts my heart that Mr. Kamadi James is not there. And I don't understand all of the complexities of that. And Superintendent, you have a Herculean task and a very challenging task of bringing all the voices to the table. So I'm encouraging each one of the school committee members to really listen. And reaching out is one thing, but my sense was that these young people were really hurting. And so as we talk about restorative practices, if there's some way that we can restore them, because I think those voices are very valuable, and I would hate to lose them and hate to lose that leadership potential in the re-imagination process of the Boston School Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Parker. I don't see her in our attendees list. Sarah Parker? Okay, we'll move on to Ursula Alston. Ursula?
Hi, how are you? Good evening. My name is Ursula Alston, and I live in the Roxbury community. I am a proud parent of a sixth grader that attends Orchard Gardens Pilot School K through eight. Orchard Gardens is a school with a student population of 900 plus. Yes, I said 900. Cutting the budget would strain the already limited resources that the dedicated teacher staff have access to. These children deal with a lot daily. Living in an underserved community, not having enough teachers in the classroom, not having enough school supplies, not having enough supplies for the nurses to tend for the students, not having enough after-school enrichment programs, especially for grades six through eight, not having enough sports and sports equipment. Please do not cut what supports these kids' education. Marion Wright Edelman is the founder of the Children's Defense Fund. And she got it right when she said, "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
You too. Good evening. Our next set of speakers have signed up for Spanish interpretation. So if our interpreters could please invite our next speakers to move over to the English Language Channel, we'll all be able to hear their testimony. Our speakers are Doris Gonzalez, Kazmari Suazo, Karina Polino, Azora Peguero, and Lucy Perez. We'll begin with Doris Gonzalez.
Hello, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Doris Gonzalez. Soy residente de South End. Soy madre de dos niños que asisten a la escuela Blasto. No es justo que corten el presupuesto de nuestra escuela. En estos momentos de pandemia es cuando la escuela necesita mejores presupuestos. Nuestros niños están sufriendo. Muchos niños necesitarán ayuda psicológica y emocional cuando regresen a la escuela. Nuestra escuela necesita estar en mejores condiciones. Las aulas no tienen puertas. No tienen divisiones. Se escuchan los estudiantes de las otras aulas y eso crea distracción. Queremos volver a la normalidad para poder trabajar y saber que estamos dejando nuestros hijos en un lugar seguro y un lugar digno. La biblioteca de la escuela está en el aire. Necesitamos más actividades como deportes. Formar equipo de béisbol, básquetbol, clases de música. Donde los niños puedan tocar instrumentos. Nuestra escuela tiene muchos estudiantes con talento que deben ser explotados. El teatro de la escuela no está en condiciones para hacer buena presentación de estos talentos. Por favor, démosles la oportunidad a los estudiantes de la escuela Blasto de tener el mejor presupuesto, el mejor presupuesto necesario para que cada estudiante pueda expander sus horizontes. No corten los presupuestos de la escuela Blasto. Por favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kazmari Suazo. I don't see anyone signed in under that name. Karina Polino? Again, no one signed in under that name. Azora Parejo? Again, no one signed in under that name. And our next speaker is Lucy Perez.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lucy Perez. Vivo en Dorchester. Madre de dos niños que actualmente se están en segundo grado de la Blasto. Madre de dos niños que actualmente se están en segundo grado de la Blasto. Mi presencia en esta noche es para exclamar por el presupuesto de la Blasto. Por favor. Autoridades del VPA, no le quiten presupuesto a la escuela de mis hijos, al futuro de mis hijos. Quitando el presupuesto a la escuela, no tendremos escuela con calidad. Con los presupuestos inclinados a las escuelas, podemos tener mejores edificaciones. Las escuelas podían tener mejores maestros. O no mejores, sino más maestros. Necesitamos programas socio-emocionales con psicólogos que se trabaje en la edificación estructural de las escuelas, ya sean puertas, ventanas y paredes. Que se implementen programas de deportes culturales, ya sea natación. Necesitamos que los niños tengan programas educativos para un futuro además de su buena y entera educación con un buen presupuesto designado a la escuela. Por eso mi clamor de hoy es dirigirme a todas las autoridades competentes del VPA y demás para que no se les recorte el presupuesto a la escuela Blasto. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Chair Oliver Davila, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan. And I just want to thank everyone who took the time to stay with us through the presentation and who spoke tonight. Your input is very important and very critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendation for the next fiscal year. I'm now going to open it up to the schools committee for any questions or comments. And if you could raise your hand virtually or in your box, that will be great. Mr. DeRouge, please go ahead.
Chair, thank you very much. Just a comment and sort of a comment and a question. First, I've been very happy to learn and hear about the Hub School program. And I think it's 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 an excellent approach to tapping into the vast resources that our city at the Greater Boston region has. It's very exciting, you know, to see that. And I hope that, you know, the piloting is successful and that we continue to expand that. And as as Mr. Bora said, you know, to expand that across all of our schools to tap into the enormous wealth of of resources that we have in our city. And the other point, overall, I made a similar comment before, but it's great to see these these programmatic investments in our students. It's great that these resources are being made available, that we have a time when through various sources, we are able to tap into more resources. And I very much look forward to also seeing the results of these investments and tracking to make sure that these innovative programs, these approaches that we're taking to solving, you know, the challenges of the school system that that we can, you know, measure and see, you know, did this money make an impact, did these investments make an impact? Because as our budget continues, you know, hopefully continue to grow, that that we see the returns to that in our students and our families. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I would just add, I think, in terms of measuring impact and really understanding our investments, that is part of the partnership and the strong work of Dr. Grandson and the Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps team. They're working with us to develop those work plans so that we can monitor the implementation. At the end of it, we'll be able to say of these investments, here's what we spent. And then they'll be able to partner with us to say this is the plan and how it was implemented and really be able to learn from from the implementation and success of these programs. So I appreciate you flagging that and making that note in terms of how we can get better as an organization from not just making strategic investments, but learning from them and finding ways to improve in future years.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you so much, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, thank you as always for the level of detail that you all have presented with us. I've got a couple of questions. Some relate to the slides, but I know it's cumbersome, so I'll try to be able to talk about what I need without having to see the slide. So one question was about the summer. And it seems that the sixteen thousand would be approximately serving twenty-five percent of our student body overall. And I had a question about how would those students be chosen, who would be given priority, et cetera? And is that planning going on now so that families are, you know?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Robinson, for that question. We are actually going to be presenting on summer learning coming up at the next school committee meeting. And we'll give you a lot of details then, but the planning is going on now. And we will be working with students who are in who are in need of those services. And we'll be open to all of our VPS students.
Yeah, my next question is about the Hub Schools model. I'm happy to see that we are moving forward on that. And particularly with the Grove Hall Alliance, what percentage of the students attending the Grove Hall schools live actually in Grove Hall in the area? Because one of my concerns often about Hub Schools, it's great, but if majority of students are not living in the neighborhood that the school is in, doesn't that complicate the the whole notion of Hub Schools? Because you've got kids, you know, having to travel great distances. Would families follow through with appointments or other kinds of things if they're not really right in the neighborhood where all of this is taking place?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers on the attendance and enrollment at the Grove Hall Alliance schools right now, but we could certainly get that for you. It is a consideration as we look at building out Hub Schools, our choice model that we have within Boston Public Schools. But as we know, one of the goals that I came in with was to create high-quality schools across every neighborhood so that they became parents' first choice for their students. Because most parents will send their children to their the school closest to home if it's a high-quality school and that they perceive it to be so. So I think that that's part of the work moving ahead, and I'll get you that enrollment information.
Okay, and if I can find it. Um, I think Nate, you, as you were talking just before I came on, you were talking about the work of the OAG Office, et cetera. Where are the budgets of the individual offices? As as we roll up this gigantic budget, you know, I think about the work of OAG and I'm wondering how many people are in that office? And do they have adequate staffing to do the the work across the district? Because we keep talking about the importance of this work overall. And I know some of it is dispersed in other areas, but we look to OAG to make sure that the balls aren't being dropped. So where and how are they funded?
Yeah, excellent question. We present our budget in the school budget files in three different snapshots. The first is by account, which is a way of thinking about what do we spend our money on? What stuff do we buy, whether it's positions or contracts or supplies? The second is by department. And so if you look in the department budget tables, you will see every single central office budget, and we've organized it by the division. So, for example, in the office, the finance division, you will see the budget office, the capital planning unit, as well as the the finance team. And so the Division of Strategy and Opportunity Gaps, Dr. Charles Grandson's division, it's actually one that we're going through a bit of a reorging or reorging of the budgets where things are moving from what was what had previously been the organization. But it is under that sort of division that you would see their budgets. And I think in terms of the work that we're doing, we're really thinking sort of holistically about central office. I think the work that they're doing around the strategic planning, work planning functions and embedding two parts of it. One are the opportunity achievement gap goals. As you saw, Dr. Grandson highlight that tonight. The second part is the racial equity planning tool and really embedding that sort of at the start of every major budget decision, policy decision, starting with the racial equity planning tool. I know it's something that his office has been supporting me on and and we're seeing that across. So it's a big task, and I think if you ask him, he would always welcome more resources to be able to achieve that work because it is such critical work to the organization.
Yeah. As we're, yeah, as we're moving forward, being a more non-racist school district and all of those things, I'm hoping that we really are willing to put the resources into the departments so that we can really get to those things and move those issues forward. The last one is more, again, we continue to talk about our decreasing numbers. And at the same time, we talked about creating more inclusive environments for students. And so my question would be, you know, again, I think I raised this before about class sizes. And particularly, you know, in this year post-pandemic and with all of our changes, we've never talked about making the class sizes smaller so that there's more in-class intention and not so much pull-out or tutoring and other kinds of things. But to really buckle down to to give teachers the optimal class size to to do the work that they're in. And that would, you know, even in our buildings, we can't, I don't know how we're going to do with getting all of our kids back in currently. So if we have fewer kids, maybe we can get more of them back in a bigger building. I don't know how all of those things come together. But but really, the question is, has there been given any thought to rethinking class size, particularly as we're trying to move towards a more inclusion kind of environment?
So actually, that's a good segue into we are reconvening our inclusion task force. And we will be looking at the staffing requirements for expanding inclusion and what we will need for that. It should be driven by a student's IEP, in my opinion. And so the resources that are needed in a classroom for each and every student ought to be provided as the individual learning plan for those students. And they legally are required. So that's really how we do class now. If you're talking about class size for a broader, the general population, there are multiple studies and often conflicting studies on the efficacy of small class size and whether they actually do make a difference or not. There's a there's an older study, a STAR study out in Tennessee that was done on class size that showed if it's below fifteen, it makes a difference. But, you know, that would be quite expensive to 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 do. We need more than thirty-two million dollars in the budget to lower our class size across the grade levels. There could be some discussion, I would think, though, Ms. Robinson, about targeted class size reduction where you do see a need for a transformational school strategy or something like that. So I'll talk back with the team about it.
Yeah, I think my idea more is that, you know, the majority of our children, whether they are on IEPs or not, given what they've been through this past year, will have some need for extra support.
Oh, yeah.
And the question is, how do we do it in a more positive way for everyone versus just singling out some students? And, you know, and given the fact that, you know, overall, our outcomes vary greatly, even for children in folks typically developing classrooms, what can we do that could make, you know, a difference overall to in support kids? And, you know, I would, I hope we could go back and relook at that study at some point.
Yeah, one of the things, Ms. Robinson, that we are doing is to work on a multi-tiered system of support so that there are supports that we give to everybody. And then there are supports that we give to kids that need a little bit more help. And then those who are really struggling, additional supports. And we create success plans for students. And as Mr. Harris has reported and before and given a report on our Panarana system is how we are logging that and making sure that we're keeping track of those tiered supports. Some of those are social emotional, some are those supports in the family through our Hub School model, or some of them might be supports with a social worker. Some of them are academic, and so it's really looking at the whole child and what that particular child needs to be able to raise their level of success in school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there any other questions from my school committee colleagues? Mr. Tran, please go ahead.
First of all, I would like to convey my appreciation to the team for a very well-done job on developing our thorough budget plan. My question may not be within the confines of the budget proposed today. But I understand that vaccination regarding the COVID is under the purview of the state, of the city and other responsible agencies. I was wondering whether the school committee, I mean, the school, through the budget office, has any sort of funding program to expedite the vaccination for students? One example is to open schools as a side for vaccination given all the problematic issues that we are facing within the state. So it's a very simple question, is is there or is there not? Some sort of thinking on 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 that issue.
Yeah, it's a really good question, Mr. Tran. We have two sites for VPS to do vaccinations. We're also partnering with others. Mr. DeRouge has a site at East Boston Health Center and has secured some additional vaccinations for VPS employees. We, as you know, are partnering with the city on multiple opportunities there. CVS is also providing opportunities for our educators as well across the state. So we have a website available to all of our employees. We surveyed our employees. We've shared with them and done trainings about the website and how to sign up. Ms. Megan Costello is on the call. Maybe she wants to talk a little bit more in detail about our vaccinations if she's still on. And then you did ask also about students. Right now, the vaccine is cleared for students age sixteen and above. There there is not a vaccine yet that's been FDA-approved for under the age of sixteen. They anticipate that vaccines will be available for children sometime in January. And so we will certainly enter that conversation. We have done flu clinics in the past, so we could enter the space of ensuring our students get vaccinated. But right now, our full But right now, our full focus has been on vaccinating our staff. And that includes our bus drivers, monitors, and everybody who is a BPS employee. Megan, are you on? I'm not sure if you're on the in the panel. Add anything here? And I think I might have put the link in the Monday memo as well. If not, we'll make sure that we we get that out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your question.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I was I was finishing up a phone call. The question is about vaccines?
Yeah, just just anything that I missed, if you want to just add anything. If not, I I think I covered it. But if there's anything additional that you want to add about vaccines?
No, I think I just really want to thank the superintendent and the Boston Public Health Commission for being super intentional about lifting up these clinics for our employees. It's been a long year. That's something that we've certainly talked about, and this is really the hope that we see for, you know, returning strong. So thanks to the superintendent for her leadership on it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Costello.
I will just add that the vaccines are available on the 11th for educators. And with our clinic, we're open on the 14th.
Thank you, Superintendent. My other school committee colleagues, do you have any questions? Okay. Vice Chair O'Neill, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. I was just waiting to see if Dr. Coleman had some questions. So if not, I want to thank the team for the presentation and and a couple of comments. One, first of all, Superintendent and Chief Cooter and the others, the focus on return, recover, reimagine is so clear to understand. And the way you even broke down the various initiatives into a box of return, recover, reimagine. Thank you for the clarity on that. When we're talking about the dollar amounts and programs, it's so much easier to think of it that way. And so a couple of questions along those lines. One, on return, and I know it's this fiscal year, but Superintendent or Mr. Cooter, I'm wondering if, and I know we're still determined, but the recent moves by the commissioner and and Desi to have us reopen faster. I'm wondering what the fiscal implications of that may be. I know we're still working through a lot of the implications. And maybe Superintendent, if you say, I want to get to that at next week's school committee meeting, that's fine. But I just, I need to put it on the table, right? We're having a fiscal discussion and so and we're talking about returning. So I'm wondering your thoughts about that.
Well, you know, we are providing both remote and in-person learning now. We've been very proud of our team for coming together and opening already to our hybrid model. As we had our phase in, we announced it back in January to our parents. They were ready for coming back hybrid two days a week. And so we should have all of our students, even high schoolers, back in school by the end of this month that want to be back in school. The commissioner today issued guidance about returning April 5th for all of our students K-5. And then by April 28th, I believe, to return the sixth grade through eighth grade, not yet determined on high school and returning high schoolers. But we obviously are going to return high schools March 29th. But this is the five days a week is what is concerning for us. So we are having to look at capacity, transportation. If we don't have capacity, the commissioner and his guidance has talked about leasing other facilities and buildings. And, you know, if there's costs with that, I don't even know the availability. And if we could do it, I mean, we're talking three weeks from now, four weeks from now. And it's a very big, complex organization. We are planning to meet with the BTU on Thursday to begin those conversations with our union partners. And we want to return our kids and return back to normal, just like the commissioner does. It's just to turn on a dime like this this quickly will take some time. So we are gonna get this guidance today. And we're going to survey our parents in the next several days. And we will do everything we can to comply and and work toward that. But there will be additional costs that will come with returning.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. And I'm sure you'll have more for us at the next school committee meeting. I just, I felt an obligation to bring it out, right? Because it's it's hard.
It's hot off the presses, Mr. O'Neill. We just got it. We just got it today. We've been busy preparing for this. So Chief of Staff Mary Dillman has been combing it and and getting things in order so that we could communicate to heads of schools, survey them, talk to them, survey our parents, talk to them, talk with our union partners, talk with our transportation department, talk with our facilities folks, talk with our technology folks, because it involves a lot more technology. And really, you know, our ODA folks about getting the survey collated and understood and then change, change routing and change schedules. It's a lot. It's a lot.
It's complex for just 50, 52 plus thousand students and 128 schools and 10,000, 12,000 employees. So certainly more complicated.
We'll do our best and we're driving, we're driving for in-person for summer and for fall for sure. So.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. And and so that, my second question was about summer, but you've mentioned that as well. But I was also struck by a combination of Chief Cooter's comments. You know, we are in a very different budget environment than we've been in many years. So typically, we have to do this so early to be able to then move it forward to the city council. And we vote on the general funds. We vote on a rough estimate of the federal budget, but we know the federal funds typically come through a little bit later. And, you know, we come back to the summer and revisit that. But in a normal environment, Mr. Cooter, it's probably what 95% of our funding is pretty certain at this point. And so we can give some pretty clear guidance to schools. This year, because of the COVID relief acts, one, two, and three, we're in a very different environment and we have some pretty significant pots of money coming along after the fact, including our regular Title I funding, you know, is still being determined as well. So but I'm very struck by your comments. And I want to second and echo your comments of we should be really careful to make sure, but be thoughtful in how we spend this, this one, two, and three, and not put ourselves in a situation with three, we have to make significant cuts. Unfortunately, in the past, we have done that. We have made investments, thinking that a source of funding is going to keep going. And then all of a sudden, three years from now, we have to pull it, school leaders, and that is simply unfair. And so, you know, as we think through it, and particularly the bill that will be drawn by the House tomorrow, they are fairly prescriptive in what we have to spend it on. But I'm struck by the comments, and I thank the parents who spoke tonight, both from Orchard Gardens and from Blackstone, because a lot of their requests about budget were not, in fact, their regular budget. But it was auditorium seats, exterminators, tables, chairs. A lot of, a lot of things we see as we walk around the school buildings that may be really good, that, you know, also bathroom, food service. A lot of these things may be great opportunity to spend to bring all of our buildings up to a low that help contribute to our students' learning, but are not critically needed right now. But with the, with relief spending, but would not put a significant burden on us that then having to make significant. And I just, I, the, from the Orchard, the Blackstone, be reinforced by parents of many other of our school buildings. So I thank them for making us today, make it a, because we as school committee members need to hear that individual input. I think there's an opportunity when funding, particularly level two and three, to think through about the needs that were identified.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. And I think, you know, we have often talked about some of our deferred maintenance that is decades in the making. We've done more to catch up with some of the leveraging of the capital budget. There's an opportunity for us to think about that. We've been talking with the academics team and talking about those high-quality curricular resources, thinking about how much it costs to roll out new curriculum and literacy that we were focused on last year and this year. But also to to really make sure we have high-quality texts and curricular resources to make sure we have, you know, we heard about desks. We did the 21st century fund upgrade of some furniture at the launch of Build BPS, but those are opportunities for us to think about. And so I do think it fits in the sort of those three buckets of like, what, what is it we can do for students to get them caught up to invest in debt tutoring? As you mentioned, there is prescriptions around 20% or so has to be around learning loss. You're going to see direct services to students because they're not going to get these years back. But we're also thinking about professional development and support for teachers to change the way we approach instruction as a district, breaking down inclusive barriers. Huge opportunity for us to rethink some of our structures in that. And then, of course, what are the materials and environments we need? We know they influence learning. You know, we know it conveys respect to our students, the buildings that they're in. And there is an opportunity for us to supplement. A lot of the work we're, you know, we're already rolling out My Way Cafes. This is the fourth year. We're doing kitchen upgrades. We're doing more about water. But really, there's an opportunity for us to think about lighting environments and upgrades to things like whiteboards. These are the things that teachers are talking about that really get in the way of instruction. And we need to, we could use this money over the next few years to get ourselves back on a path of maintaining our buildings and maintaining our resources in the same way. So I appreciate you bringing that up. And as we think about this over the next few months, those are kind of the feedback and places we'll, we'll want to continue to engage with you and the community about to make sure we're balancing the right sort of investments that last beyond this year. And when you make the investment, technology is a great example. You make an investment in a computer, that's going to last a few years before it needs to be replaced or refreshed. So that's, that's the kind of thing we are definitely thinking about, focused on.
And I even go all the way to former school committee member, Meg Campbell, who used to talk about literally the colors that we used in school buildings to make it more conducive to learning. And had actually done a lot of research into topic. These are all one-time things that could be done that I think is is more appropriate with a good portion of the COVID funds, along with what we do for our students with disabilities who have loss and, you know, need some makeup and that type of thing. So thank you. I look forward to the thoughtful approach on that. And I will stop at that. I have taken my five minutes.
I just want to add, the parents also talked about well-rounded education, you know, arts programming, programming for libraries and books and programming for athletics and sports and sports equipment for PE classes. You know, arts, arts programming and kilns. I was at a school the other day and a teacher asked for a kiln. You know, I mean, there's just all of these different opportunities to really provide for a well-rounded education for students. It's not just math and science and tutoring and drill and kill. It's also those things that feed the soul of a child around really being a whole child, right? And all of the, yeah.
And so since you brought that up, Superintendent, I also want to echo the comments from the Youth Associated Latina who talked about more culturally relevant curriculum. Again, that's, this is a, this is all fits under your reimagine bucket.
That's right.
But I want to join the chorus of my fellow members who have asked about or have been supportive of the hub school concept. I think that is a chance to most fundamentally reimagine how we get great schools in every neighborhood in the city that parents want to do. We have full wraparound services that we more fully engage with the partners. So dying involved, you know, that we tap our newest members, Mr. DiRagio's expertise in the neighborhood health centers. And we bring in the Y and the Boys and Girls Clubs and others and learn from the couple of schools that have done it, but just fundamentally reimagine that neighborhood approach to our schools that I think. And I think, again, the co-funding may offer to do a lot of seeding on this, maybe with partners that are, you know, better able to handle a short-term fall and do creative work for us than we would be if we take those expenses on ourselves. So and last but not least, I also want to, and then I'll hand it to the chair because I bet she's going to jump on this as well. Let's also not forget our alternativenation program, particularly rethinking that as well as we look at the reimagine piece and and the funding piece on helping the students that are engaged in in those programs as well. And now I'll stop. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Robinson, do you have your hand up again?
Yes, I just had a quick question. I just needed some clarification. On slide number 29, which was about the central office infrastructure for social workers, at the bottom of the slide, you talked about the waiver process. And maybe you explained it, but I don't remember what that was about. What was the waiver? Why were 13 waivers approved and what does that mean overall?
Happy to jump in on that. Thank you. Unless Superintendent, did you want to respond?
No, you can go ahead and respond to that.
Great. So this was an effort to be more responsive to school communities who have well-established systems for supports for mental health for our students. So 13 school leaders submitted a waiver process that included a pretty rigorous process with folks from the Office of Opportunity Gaps, folks from our department, looking at it, reviewing the racial equity planning tool, having conversations with their school leaders to make sure that that we feel comfortable that there, there are options for either a CLSP practitioner, a school psychologist, a, a restorative justice. I think those are the three that were the folks that, what folks chose, that that was something that would complement already the work and the systems and structures in place in their schools.
Right. But but that doesn't mean that all schools don't equitably have the social workers as psychologists that students need versus, you know, I mean, I know we've talked about this before with autonomies. Things get chosen, but then the question is, have they, are they adequately thinking about the actual student needs in those autonomous choices? So that we're not going to hear later that students don't feel they have the adequate counselors or the whatever, but the school has chosen to do something else instead.
Right, no, absolutely. In fact, the majority of the waivers increased the allocation of school psychologists for the schools. So there was still, and almost all carried an inclusion of a social worker. So it was part of the investment was reallocated. So certainly, there's still mental health capacity in all the schools. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there any other questions from any of my colleagues? Okay. So I, I just have a couple of comments, not any questions. Thank you, everyone, for your presentation again and for all the work behind the scenes. I know this is not a month-long process, but many, many months. And I know you'll probably get a week off and then you'll start all over again talking about the budget because it just keeps going. So I wanted to just also thank the city. Thank you, Mr. Cooter, for pointing that out. I think it's really important. I know we keep saying that, but it is really important to note that other cities are not getting this kind of funding, and that is a big deal. So we thank the mayor, we thank the city. I wanted to just say I loved Monica Roberts' comment. She's speaking my language when she said, "Family engagement is everybody's business." I don't know if that was the exact quote, but something to that nature. And I totally could not agree with her more. I think it's, it's everyone's business responsibility that we work with our families. And I just wanted to say, I know it's a city directive in terms of that equitable procurement. And I thank the city for increasing that. I'd love to see that percentage, you know, keep growing every year across the city. But it's great to see that and have, you know, somebody who's looking out for that because it's really important that we support our minority and women-owned and people of color. our minority and women-owned and people of color businesses. So I'm glad to see that. And I really appreciate that we are going to be getting feedback on the Esser. I keep thinking it's Essa. I wish that it was named something else. We get it all confused, but really appreciate that we're going to have a community feedback around that because I think that will be important to have our community voice. And I, I, you know, I totally, you know, I just really, really appreciate and I echo the vice chair's comments. I think it's really, really important that we do not use dollars on things that we can't sustain. I, I, I am, I'm all for that. I think that's just a terrible, terrible decision if we do that because we don't want to have to pull that later, you know, in terms of staffing, et cetera. And I think all the creativity heard tonight, I'm sure there'll be more from school leaders and community about how else we can use these dollars. And I agree on making sure the all dead comment that the vice chair made, it will be really important. And, and I loved your example, Vice Chair, about Meg Campbell, because I actually, I visited her building before Sociedad renovated their building. And there was, it was just the, the colors, the layout. They brought nature into the building. So it was just a really wonderful design, you know. So, you know, I'm sure she's, she's probably listening right now. She'll call us tomorrow. But anyway, I thank you again for your really thoughtful presentation. And I just want to remind everybody that all the budget documents are available online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You can email your comments to budget@bostonpublicschools.org as well as to any school committee members. The committee will vote on the superintendent's final fiscal year twenty-two budget recommendation at our meeting on March twenty-fourth. And if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to, oh, sorry, one more thing. I apologize. I missed, just to let everybody know that our, although we are voting on the twenty-fourth, the next remote budget hearing will take place on Wednesday, March seventeenth at 5:00 PM and will be immediately followed by a school committee meeting. So if there's nothing further, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the role?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, have a great evening.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes, and a good night.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.